I like being able to, you know, make government work for the people and you feel really good when you are able to help somebody out. And so with all the momentum we've been making with, you know, getting the county in order, improving it, big building projects that we can talk about, I've got, I feel like I got a momentum and it's been a good momentum and I just want to keep that going.
Commissioner, how are you?
Doing great.
Great. Thank you so much for coming today. I know you're squeezing it in between a lot of different events. To give us some background, you've been commissioner, why are you running again? It's one of those things that it's not, it's not the most entertaining job, right? And you take a lot of flack from people in politics, there's no way to make everyone happy. What's, what's driving you to run for reelection?
I, I feel we've done a good job, this current board and even the, the one that I served on from 2020 to 2022, two, two, or two Republicans, one Democrat, now we have an all Republican board. I think we made some great progress and I really enjoy helping people. You know, you don't get an opportunity every day to try to help people, but when, when somebody comes in with an issue, or if they come before the board with just a complicated problem, I like being able to, you know, make government work for the people. And you feel really good when you are able to help somebody out. And so with all the momentum we've been making with, you know, getting the county in order, improving it, big building projects that we can talk about, I've got, I feel like I got a momentum and it's been a good momentum and I just want to keep that going.
Let's talk about the big projects because one of the, one of the things that another candidate was saying is that there have been inefficiencies with building or redundancies, or there are better options here, better options there. But, you know, I want to hear from you, like, what are the big things that you guys have been doing? And do you think that there were opportunities to perhaps repurpose other properties or other buildings instead of, for instance, the, uh, the drivers, uh, come on, I can do this one, the, not the DMV, but where you can go and test for your driver's license?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sharon, uh, Sharon Olman was critical of that, that placement and, and spending. But again, I asked her, like, did you, did you have conversations about why that was the best option or why that was the best project? Or decision for the project? And she said, no. And so that I would love to know what, what was the thinking behind that?
Uh, well, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what she's referring to, but, uh, a lot of people don't realize that drivers fall under two different departments. It's the sheriff who's in charge of driver's license. And it's the county assessor who's in charge of registrations and renewals.
Sure.
It's two separate offices. And, um, we have the, so Ada County has been working to expand the number of DMVs for, you know, car registrations and what like. So our goal is to have one in each city because it's kind of unfair for people in Kuna to have to drive to downtown Boise or whatever. So we were partnering with, uh, Kuna City and they're going to help us, uh, with a building to get their own DMV down there. Now there are conversations ongoing with the, with the sheriff and the assessor about, why can't we have more, you know, shared offices where you have driver's licenses and registrations in, in the same building? And so that's, you know, ongoing conversations, that's something worth talking about because logically people would want to go to the same building for both services.
Gotcha, gotcha. And again, I'm, I'm 99% sure she was talking about a, uh, a driver's license testing center, but again, regardless, so let's talk about the larger projects then. What are things that you guys are getting after that are, that are capital projects? And, and what, what kind of returns are you hoping to get from the capital projects? MTU Studios is the proud producer for the Ada County Sheriff Podcast, the Idaho Wildlife Federation Podcast, the State Representative Ted Hill Podcast, the Idaho State PTA Podcast, and many more. If you or your organization is thinking about starting a podcast, MTU Studios would love to help. Just check out mtustudios.com.
So the biggest and most exciting project that we're working on is the Expo Idaho property. You know, which includes the Western Idaho Fair, includes Hawk Stadium, there's an RV park there, uh, 4H Club, a lot of different stuff and people, if you've lived here for more than five years, you know about the historic Le Bois Horse Track, which went defunct in 2018. So this is on county property, same property as the Western Idaho Fair. If you go to a concert in the grandstands, uh, when the stage is not there, you would see the big track, you know, which again, has been vacant since about 2018. The, the story is that, you know, the legislature changed the laws because they had, they had, uh, horse wagering machines there. And that was keeping the industry afloat. And the legislature okayed that and they were there for a couple of years. Then the legislature went and looked at it and they said, this looks a little too much like a casino. I mean, they looked like slot machines. And, you know, it's all semantics, but they, they did resemble slot machines. And the legislature said, we're, we changed our mind. We don't want this anymore. So legislature changed the law to ban those. And then the governor had promised to veto it because he was, I guess, you know, a horse racing guy, or at least supported the industry. And he, he was one day late in the veto. He vetoed it one day too late and the Idaho Supreme Court said, doesn't count. And, uh, now was there politics involved in that? Possibly. I don't know. And this is the previous governor as well.
Gotcha.
So at that point, the industry couldn't afford to continue the horse racing in Ada County. And there was a referendum that went on the ballot statewide to bring it back. Uh, that, and that was a whole fascinating story because you had the Indian tribes who really want exclusive rights to, for gaming, harassing petition signatures, you know, who were getting this referendum on the ballot. I mean, it was big city politics in small town Idaho. They had hired goons to harass petition gatherers. It was, it was crazy.
Wait, who hired the goons?
The, the Indian tribes.
And they had like agent provocateurs that were harassing people and going around?
Yeah. I had a friend in North Idaho who was a petition gatherer and they had to have safe houses where they would take the petition gatherers to throw the, uh, the goons off the scent and then try to go out into the community without being followed. It got that bad. You know, this is
That's wild.
Yeah, yeah. And so the state of Idaho voted against it. Ada County voted in favor, but state of Idaho overall. So ever since 2018, the referendum failed. It's just been a ghost town. And, you know, no offers have come in to bring horse racing back because it's not profitable anymore. So we were sitting on hundreds of horse stalls just decaying, falling to the ground, you know, full of stray cats and graffiti and all that. And it's like, well, we don't have any money to, to do anything with this. We'd love private industry to come in and do something, but no offers. Flash forward to the COVID years and then Congress went crazy with the spending and they gave every city and county rescue plan money. So Ada County got $90 million. And you could only spend it on certain things, certain categories. And we did our research and found out you can actually use this to do a park. And so we are going to build just an incredible new park at, uh, Western Idaho, um, on the Le Bois property for about, you know, 40 ish million dollars. And, um, that, that's, you know, a massive project. And so that's what we're working on right now. But then you also have the rest of the property that has Hawk Stadium. And it's time, you know, Hawk Stadium is interested in, you know, they've been interested for years about building a new stadium. They originally tried to do it in Boise some years ago. It didn't go well. And that's a long story, but, uh, we've got a lot of land there to do other stuff. United States Soccer is really interested in getting, you know, semi-pro or even professional soccer going in Boise. I mean, we've, the Western Idaho Fairgrounds property, such a huge piece of land right in the middle of the county. And when I got elected, you know, there was rumors that maybe the, some people wanted to sell it off to developers, just put houses there, move the Western Idaho Fair out into the desert somewhere. I was really not in favor of that. And when we reached out to the public overwhelmingly, the public wanted us to keep the Western Idaho Fair where it was. So helping to redevelop that, make like a world-class facility right in the middle of the county without using local tax dollars, uh, to me is just such an exciting thing to be a part of.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
That's fantastic. What's the timeframe for all this?
The park should be, has to be completed by 2026. And as far as all the rest of it, um, there's no timetable. We're, we're entertaining proposals and, and ideas. But, uh, we're getting some interesting proposals. And again, I absolutely don't advocate building sports stadiums with tax dollars. I'm completely against that. So we want, you know, the teams, private industry, whatever, to figure out a way to do this without asking for tax dollars, which makes it a little tougher, but I think they're, hopefully they're up to it.
And man, that would be wild. If you've got professional soccer going there and, and, and other sports programs.
And regional tournaments, you know, we want to be a hub for, uh, you know, junior soccer tournaments and baseball tournaments and all that kind of stuff.
Um, talking about big swaths of land, uh, the cities are growing really rapidly, obviously. But there are a lot of like master plan developments that have started popping up, not started in like the last two years, but there, they are becoming really populated and a more popular option like Dry Creek Ranch. Because although we're right next to Eagle, the city of Eagle, we're technically unincorporated Ada County. And that means the developers come to you guys and say, okay, look, what, what works, what doesn't work, what can we, what can we do?
Yeah, we're your city council, basically.
Right, exactly.
If you live in Dry Creek.
Right. And there was a, there was a, a point last year, actually, when a couple of people from the city, uh, or excuse me, from Dry Creek came in and appealed to the commission for a couple of issues within the development. Doesn't matter, but yeah, you're like our city council. But other cities in the area like Eagle have, have been critical of some of this. Now, I'm not saying everybody in Eagle, but I have heard people say, for instance, Mayor Pierce was saying, hey, look, we have an Eagle sports program that is tapped out, right? Not every single sport, but we don't have enough spaces to accommodate all the surrounding area and our Eagle population. And I think it was a really specific one. It wasn't, again, it wasn't every single sports program. But the, the point is that he was like, look, we're going to actually put a moratorium on people coming from the outside of the city to play in this like soccer league or something, whatever it might've been. That's one very small, very specific example of, of unincorporated developments, drawing on resources from cities. And again, we're not paying Eagle taxes, right? Like we're not, of course you pay enrollment or whatever it is, but there, there's a tax, just a living taxation and having more people on the roads and having more people crowding out sports programs. That's, that's happening. What do you think that the, the development, the unincorporated Ada County development closer to cities is being done as best it can to not impact the cities that aren't drawing from the tax base? Or do you think that there, there are ways that, that they could be rolled out better?
That, that's a good question. And, um, you know, I'm not sure. Really the cities are the ones to tell us if they feel that too many people from the county are going to the city programs like the city of Eagle is. And so therefore I think it's important for, you know, developers when they're considering doing a large community out in the county, to incorporate some of that, those amenities to keep people in their community and not commuting to the city. And, you know, I think Dry Creek is a pretty good example. And I think developers these days understand that it's, it's always a massive headache to do a big development. You're always going to get opposition. There's always going to be concerns about growth and traffic and noise and all that.
Sure.
So I think they go above and beyond now to try and come up with a plan that everybody can agree to, where it, it makes it easy for county commissioners to approve it because, you know, they're not asking for us to put in sewer or water. They're doing it themselves. They're providing, you know, athletic fields or community centers, uh, which Dry Creek is doing. We, we were at the groundbreaking for their, you know, community center that they're building out here, which I think that, that's one of the things that can keep people in Dry Creek from, you know, using the Eagle services. They're putting in trails. We're talking with them about putting in more bike trails. So I, I think that is something, you know, as we move forward, that, um, we can incorporate into requirements for developments that they have to put in, um, not just homes, but things that will be there for the residents to enjoy and not use city services.
Right. Are you, and again, I know, I know this is not, not within your control, but are you concerned at all about, or, or are you taking into account the idea that the, the amenities for master plan communities? There was a, a vote recently in, uh, or a bill that got presented in the last session that said, hey, look, instead of waiting until the, the, the master plan community is like 99 or a hundred percent done, before they have to have all the amenities, you have to start turning over the HOA, you know, a little bit sooner than that. And one issue that has been brought up about Dry Creek Ranch is, hey, look, these, the, we were sold with the houses with the idea that there would be these amenities, but this is going to be like a 15-year rollout, similar to Avmore. Avmore is going to be way longer and, and Val Nova. These are, these are communities that get planned out with a certain number of amenities, but it might be 10 to 20 years before those amenities actually come to fruition. In that interim time, they would still have to be drawing on, on the cities that surround them, right? So is there, is that kind of on your radar as well, which is, hey, look, although we may plan out these communities that will eventually have these great amenities, which is great, like that, that's how it should be planned. Is there any consideration of, okay, but this community might take 30 years to do. And in the next 30 years, it's possible that they won't have any or all of these amenities, you know, in, in play?
It's not too much on our radar, but I think that's a good point. Because some of these development agreements, they, they don't specify when the certain amenities have to be completed. Um, you know, I'll, I'll point to Dry Creek, you know, they have a requirement to put in certain trails to connect up to the Eagle Bike Park and stuff like that. But there's no, there's no time limit on it. And, um, recently, you know, we had the issue with, uh, the, the young bicyclist who got hit by a car and died because he was going down the road. So that really prompted the community and Dry Creek and the county to come together and say, look, we, we know you don't have to build a trail, you know, anytime soon. It's in your plan, but it could be 10 years from now. But there's really a desire for, for the community to do it. So what can we do to help you get this done now? Because obviously there's a need for it. And Dry Creek's been great to work with. We're in conversations right now about how to build that trail. Again, we're, the county is imposing on them to do it because they're not required to.
Gotcha.
Where, where the commissioners going, this is in the interest of the public. We can't force you and we don't want to force you. Can, can we all find a solution? And it, it's been great dealing with them. We're, we're trying to work out the details right now to get that path going. But I think that's definitely, those kinds of issues, we, we got to take into consideration moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, it would be great. I mean, again, the, to your, to your point, hey, look, we can't force you, but is there something we can do to all wiggle and work together a little bit? So this all works? I think that's, that's a great, great position because when we all fall back on just doing, hey, look, I don't have to do, these are the things I absolutely have to do and I'm not doing anything more. It's like, gosh, man, that, that, that becomes a difficult, difficult, uh, that's a tough crowd.
Yeah.
Tough crowd to deal with.
I mean, as far as schools, you know, they are donating land for a school where, uh, you know, the Boise School Department, they want to build a, they wanted to build a school, but they wouldn't give them a timeline. You know, they're like, we want to put a school there, but it might not be for 10 years.
Right.
And obviously the parents wanted a school a lot sooner. And so we were able to, um, allow them to build a charter school because they donated the land.
Right.
And, um, again, Boise School District opposed it, but it came before the commissioners and hey, you guys are donating the land. I support charter schools and so it was no problem for me to be able to support that.
Yeah, right. Um, talk to me about the jail bond. Okay. So the jail bond narrowly missed.
Right.
I've had several conversations with Sheriff Clifford about it and, and trying to help people understand that, you know, his position on that. What's your position on the jail bond?
Well, uh, you know, as a taxpayer, I'm not big on bonds in general, right? But, uh,
God, what an honest answer.
Yeah, yeah. You know, nobody wants them and, uh, but the sheriff, you know, came to us, you know, we, we have a problem. The jail is overcrowded. It's consistently been overcrowded since I got elected just because of the massive growth. You know, the joke I make is, look, we need a new facility. Where are we going to put all these Californians that are moving here?
Ah, I see what you did there.
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, yeah, it, it was built for
If I may, that's actually an astute point because there, uh, he had to explain to me why there are seasonal, uh, seasonal increases in the jail population. I'm like, what do you mean? Like, do people get more feisty in the summer? He's like, no, well, what actually happens is people, you have outside traveling, uh, you know, essentially gangs of people that come through like crews of criminals and they don't like traveling in the winter. So in the wintertime, you have like a lower population in the jail than in the summertime when weather is good and they can jump in their car and, you know, drive up here. So yeah, that's a fair point. There are plenty of out-of-state criminals that get stuck in the jail system.
Yeah. And it's just growth in population.
We should, we should bill the counties they came from. Like if you came from Contra Costa County and you get jailed here, we should be able to send a bill to them.
I'm all for that. If they'll pay it, I'm down. Let's send them a bill.
Let's find out. Let's just give it a shot. Anyway, I'm sorry I interrupted, so.
And there's, there's limited stuff that the county can do. I mean, I am interested in the laws that the state passes that, you know, affect sentences and are people getting sentenced for too long, too short? Are the judges, you know, are some judges putting people away for way too long or some judges putting them away for way too short? You know, we can't do anything about the judiciary. We can't do anything about the judges. Uh, we have so many people on probation. I mean, I've, I have anecdotal evidence. I've personally known a couple of people who were on probation way too long. You know, one elderly woman who, uh, you know, they kept her on probation because she couldn't pay her fines. They're like, once you pay your fines, you'll be off probation. And it's just a woman in her 60s. Well, she was on social security and she couldn't pay her fines. So she was on probation almost indefinitely till she could borrow some money. And I'm like, that's not really somebody we need clogging up the system. So we really need the legislature and the courts to step up and really take a look on, you know, what we're doing with uh, our inmate population based on sentencing. The only thing that me as a county commissioner can do is say, okay, the problem you're giving me is we need a, a bigger building. And how are we going to pay for it? Or should we pay for it? And I felt that the bond was the most constitutional, um, way to do it. You know, you get that two-thirds vote to go into debt and it's not the board deciding it, it's the public. Let's give it to the public. The sheriff can make his case. And if the public wants to go into debt, they can do that. And overwhelmingly they supported it, but just not 66 and two-thirds. It was like 65.8.
Yeah, it was under a percent or something. Yeah.
So obviously there's, there's support for, um, investing in the jail and dealing with this problem. But it's just not through the bond at this time. And I, I don't believe, I believe in respecting the vote of the people. And as a taxpayer, I always hated when the government would lose a bond and then try to put it on the very next election. You know, like second bite at the apple, right? I, I don't think that's appropriate. So we have enough in our savings. I mean, at least the plan we've come up right now is let's, let's do this expansion in pieces. We'll, we'll pay for it as we go. So the first part of the expansion is improving the kitchen, which apparently was rated for about a thousand meals a day. It's now serving 3,000 meals a day.
Right.
So we've got enough money to start that remodel. We can try to keep saving money over a couple of years. Maybe we can save enough money for an expansion. But maybe we go back to the public in a couple of years with a different dollar amount, a different plan. The sheriff can bring it back to the public and say, okay, here's what we've done. Here's how we've tried to address the problem. We still need your help. You know, let's bring it back to the voters again.
I like that. I had no idea that the county was able to start doing it in pieces with them. I thought, I thought they were definitely going to have to go back to the voters for the second bite and be like, okay, pretty pleased though. We, we really, really need it.
Well, we're lucky because we've had a, a bit of a surplus in our fund balance the last couple of years. So we've had some savings that, you know, and you just wish, okay, all of the previous boards for the last 10 years. God, if you just would've put 2 million bucks a year in savings for the, for the jail, we would've had it without going to bond, but.
Yeah. Um, what, speaking of, uh, again, in, in the line of, uh, law enforcement and, and first responders, EMS services seems to be something that is really jumping up in, in attention. I actually had a Deputy Gomez in here just, just before he got here and he, he, I believe it's in Boise County. They still have volunteer, like, like he jumps in the ambulance and like drives the ambulance. And he volunteers on Saturday nights to drive the ambulance. And again, I'm pretty sure it's Boise County. But the point is that there are, with the exploding growth in population, it, it, restraining these systems that were, that were not, in some people's mind, fully funded or appropriately taken care of in the first place. What do you see as the future for, for county EMS services?
Well, you've got Ada County and then the rest of the state. And yeah, obviously we're the big populated, uh, wealthy county. You got Boise County or Gem County. It's, it's a different story.
Sure.
So there have been a proposal in the legislature to declare EMS a critical service. And I think if that would've passed, it would've helped with the funding for EMS. Because EMS, even in Ada County is, I would say, underfunded because, uh, just the way it was set up. They can only raise their budget, you know, a little bit a year and it's not covering the growth, you know? And so we're, we are looking at i- i- impact fees for emergency services. That's, that's being debated right now. But overall, the EMS, I would say is underfunded and it needs to be looked at, how to fix that. And perhaps these impact fees, if we actually get them passed, that might help with emergency medical. You know, and then looking big picture, you know, there's always, there's seems to have been a historical rivalry between fire and EMS. You know, they're two separate departments, right? And, you know, the fire thinks that we should absorb EMS and the EMS thinks we should absorb fire. And there's been, you know, tension for, for years. But I give a lot of credit to our EMS director, Sean Rains, and the current Boise Fire Chief. They've, they've helped to bridge that gap. And they're working a lot closer together now to have a lot more collaboration between the two where I don't know if we're ever going to get to the point where we just have one emergency services department in Ada County that's fire and rescue and EMS. Someday we may get there. But right now they're, they've got a good collaborative relationship where we can, you know, if we're going to build a, a, a new fire station, we can have an EMS station in the same building or vice versa. And so again, that's, that's not the board. That's our EMS director and Boise Fire and the other fire departments working together. And yeah, apparently from everything we hear, it's, the relationship's a lot better than it has been in years.
Right. And I'm, I'm aware that you're not the person like laying out the plan for all of this. It's just in general, like, where are we going? Because we are growing a lot. Obviously we have a, a ceiling on how fast budgets can grow and things like that. And the population is obviously outpacing that, which is, which is a big thing. Speaking of budgets, and I know this episode hasn't published, but I was speaking with Sharon Olman, um, yesterday, the day before. And she, she's really concerned about inefficiencies with spending. She, and again, she didn't like name you by name or anything, but what do you think about that? Do you think that within, within the county, we are hitting a target appropriate amount of efficiency and, and honoring the taxpayer dollar sufficiently? Or do you think that there are some, you know, out, either outstanding or current projects where it's like, yeah, look, maybe that wasn't the best call or like we made the best call at the time, but the world kind of changed. She referenced one, um, particular project of, I think it was $15 million for a portion of, um, parking spots in, uh, in downtown Eagle in a large development, saying that, or excuse me, downtown Boise, um, that we're renting out. And she was saying, you know, they're, we're only getting like a two-point something percent return. And I understand in today's dollars, two-point something is not great, but you know, like five years ago, two-point something was good. So, and I'm not saying that justifies the, the program. I'm just wondering, do you think there are inefficiencies or better ways that you could, you know, at this point refinance or, or stop leases and actually just purchase properties, making things of that nature?
Yeah. And, and just to point out that parking garage purchase was about three boards ago before I was there. So I can't be blamed for that one if it's, if it's not working out. But, um,
No, I, well, let me ask you this. Do you think if, if you had an easy button right now, an impossible easy button that says like, get rid of the parking spots. I didn't bring them on. Not my jam. I'm not responsible for them. We engaged in this agreement. But it's not the best agreement. We will honor it. I'm not saying you're going to like try to get out of it, you know? But do you think that it's something that, that is still a good idea?
That's a tough one because we have to look at, okay, what's the future of the, the courthouse in downtown Boise? So the judges would love to have that be just exclusively a courthouse. Right now it's a courthouse slash administration building. And the judges feel that they need more courtroom space. And so they would really like to take the whole building.
Sure.
Uh, and so for years, the county's been trying to figure out, do we build a new administration building? If we do, do we build it right beside the courthouse in what's called the triangle lot? Which is, you know, the street parking right beside, or do we find a better location? Like, let's get out of downtown. This is expensive real estate. Can we go find something somewhere else? And I'm, you know, th- those are hard questions to, to ask. I mean, growth might force our hand at some point. I don't want to build another building. Buildings are expensive, but it's also expensive to be downtown. And, uh, there's again, no easy answers. I don't, um, I don't feel that the court needs to expand that much more than it is right now, but we may get there. And, you know, we had an interest from CCDC about our triangle lot. You know, it's undeveloped piece of property right beside the courthouse that all the employees parked there. And that didn't go through, but we're always, we're always looking and trying to find a solution. I mean, nothing is easy when it comes to real estate, building new buildings. It's, you're either leasing parking downtown or you probably got to go into debt to build another building.
Gotcha. Um, do you think the utilization, uh, or further utilization of like remote employment is a, is a good option to reduce the burden on the physical location?
Oh yeah. I mean, one, one of the good things, well, it's silver linings of COVID when, when we figured out, oh, we actually can work remote. We don't have to have everybody here.
Right.
We have the technology. We can be better, you know? The internet exists, people. Zoom exists. Why are you all coming to the office?
Cause Zoom is terrible, Commissioner. Come on now. Like, I want to, I want to stab myself in the eyes every time I see a recorded Zoom call. It's a, yeah, maybe that's a little extreme, but you know.
But a lot of employees, you know, they're not necessarily doing Zoom meetings. They can do all their work from behind a computer screen at their home.
Right.
You know, if you're just behind a computer screen all day and your employer can, you know, gives you your tasks. And if you get them done in the appropriate amount of time, why do you got to be at the office? So that really got pushed during COVID. And so we have talks with our department heads, you know, we've talked about this a lot. If you've got, if you're running out of space and you have positions that can be done at home and you can monitor it, let's try it. Like we will give you authority to allow work from home to alleviate the crowding down here. And overall it's been successful to varying degrees. You know, every department's different. Some people got to be at the courthouse. Some people don't.
Sure.
And so I, I mean, I am totally in support of, you know, remote work if, uh, if people can still be productive.
Gotcha. Okay. And again, I kind of derailed the, the larger question. Gotcha. Okay. And again, I kind of derailed the, the larger question of, do you feel like there are large outstanding, you know, inefficiencies or, or things that can really be improved on? Or do you think that the, the county in large part is doing right by the taxpayer dollar?
I'm looking for them every day and we, I, I would say I haven't found any massive issues because if we did, we'd be dealing with, you know, day one. You know, we're looking and it's, it's hard to find. We've, we find little things and we try to address them. I mean, just recently, uh, we used our EMS switch to a private company to do the billing instead of billing in-house, which should save the county about a quarter million dollars a year. So there are things like that, uh, that we are constantly improving. We hired a fleet manager for the first time to manage all the vehicles in the Ada County fleet. Because when you have 13 departments and six elected officials, there's a lot of cars.
Right, right, right.
And it's hard to keep track of all that and vehicles are expensive. So if you've got one guy managing the entire fleet, we can sell off the vehicles we don't need. We can save money on maintenance. We can do carpooling, all that kind of stuff. So that's, that's one more thing where we're saving money.
There was a department that Sharon brought up, and again, I haven't confirmed this, but she said the department got a bunch of Broncos. Do you guys get a bunch of new Broncos for a specific department?
Uh, well, we do get Broncos, like.
But the new Broncos are so ugly.
Really?
Come on. Are you telling, okay, fine. Maybe it's like, I don't know. I was just laughing about it. I was like, why those cars? They're like so expensive too. I don't know. That's just me. I would have thought that, you know, a bunch of like, you know, F-150s or something. I don't know.
It, you know, and it could be the sheriff's department. The sheriff department is not covered under our fleet. So they, they get a lot of vehicles. It, it could have been elections. I'm not, I'm not sure. Like every department's buying vehicles and you have to hope that, you know, the, the other elected officials and the other department heads are not, you know,
Mismanaging.
Mismanaging the money. And if that comes to us, like we've had to turn down a couple of big purchases before, you know? At, at the landfill, they, they wanted a big piece of equipment years ago that we had to, had to turn down.
Sure, sure, sure.
Some things are just too extravagant.
Sure. And look, like there are, there are departments, God, I shouldn't. She mentioned the apartment. I was like, huh, that's interesting. But there are departments that need larger SUVs, like the sheriff's department, if it is sheriff's department, they're like, they need larger vehicles to transport people in, you know, that's, that's a clear thing. So.
This is a good thing about having the fleet manager because we can give him instructions, like you know what they need. Like I'm not, I'm not the automotive expert. You know what these departments need. So don't let them splurge on.
On the Bronco.
On the Bronco with the sunroof or whatever the, the extras package is like, keep it, keep it humble.
Yeah, those, uh, I'm blown away by those cars, but you know, look, it's not the first time American automobilmakers have done funny things, in my mind, anyway. It is what it is.
Central District Health, they're trying to get a $250,000 mobile clinic going, which I, I really just kind of gave me sticker shock, you know, they.
Is that a sprinter van, like an extended sprinter van with?
Almost like an RV.
Yeah, yeah.
RV, like a giant RV that's got solar panels and showers and, uh, you know, it started, started at a hundred thousand and then they found one for 250,000. And I said, I told, I talked to our representatives on the board. I said, let's pump the brakes. This sounds way too extravagant. I don't care if you budgeted for it. This, let's make sure you really need this. And our fleet manager, who was actually the fleet manager of St. Luke's, said during the pandemic, they bought one of those and it's been sitting unused in the parking lot for three years, you know, top of the line mobile clinic. And I said, that sounds like, you know, getting a used vehicle, maybe even St. Luke's could donate it. I mean, if they're listening. You know, if, if you're sitting on this mobile clinic and you're not using, Central District Health and the taxpayers would be very grateful if you could donate that. So they're in talks right now and hopefully that could save us a square of a million dollars if, if St. Luke's wants to, uh, do a solid for Ada County.
Come on, St. Luke's. Holla. With regard to Central District Health, there, I hate to use the word crisis, but like people talk about the mental health crisis and problems that, that individuals experience, especially since the pandemic. That seems to have just flipped a switch with people. Just, it was just almost too much for them to handle. Is that, do you feel like that's being sufficiently funded to, to help with, with just general public health and including the mental health crisis?
No, it's, it's not. And I don't know if it can ever be because it just, the mental health issues just keep getting worse and worse. You know, we've got all this healthcare. We got every, every amenity we could need in this world and somehow mental health keeps going the other way. And I don't know if it's drugs, if it's, you know, just we're all addicted to screens, but it's almost like we have it too good that, you know, we don't have to work hard for anything anymore. So the brain just, you know, says, I'm going to fight with myself.
Yeah, right.
I, I don't know what it is. I'm not the expert, but mental health is a huge issue and I don't think most communities deal with it adequately. I mean, our jail has kind of become a de facto mental hospital. A lot of people are in jail because they have mental problems and they should be in some kind of a hospital. And it's not fair for the jailers to be the mental health nurses of the community. So Ada County, we have, you know, we use some of our rescue plan money to fund some additional mental health counselors and specialists through Terry Riley. You know, we're paying for, I think, three, three mental health professionals to help ease the, the load of the cases that they get. But, you know, until maybe a, a giant hospital is built to, you know, deal specifically with mental health. I, I don't know. We're, we're always going to have these problems. I think the state of Idaho is finally talking about stepping it up on mental health. Cause you know, you see what happens when that goes untreated and that's, that's what's going on in, you know, Portland and Seattle and all the homelessness. They didn't get a handle on it and look, look what's happening over there.
Yeah. I mean, look, I can't disagree with you on that. It's certainly not being, it's certainly not being handled and they're just exacerbating it. You know, at, at the very least we have some legislators that are going hard, like, you know, Representative Hill who passed the, the mandatory, uh, mandatory minimum for fentanyl. I mean, that's, that's a wonderful thing. Um, you know, try to give, give more tools and backing to law enforcement that's trying to handle the drugs. And obviously Portland's going the other way, which is fine. They can, they can do whatever they want. We have talked about a lot of different things. Is there anything that I've missed? Are there any projects that you're really, you know, want to talk about or, or issues that you think are going unnoticed?
We could talk about juvenile jail.
Hmm, let's do that.
You know, the sheriff is in charge of adult jail, but the commissioners are in charge of juvenile jail. So you got a bad kid who goes to jail, that's under the, the purview of the county commissioners. The juvenile detention facility is, um, it's kind of by St. L's Hospital, that part of town. Not a lot of people know about it. And there's not too many kids in there, which is great. There's a ton of kids who are on supervised probation and that kind of stuff. But we have to fund this jail. So it's a very old facility. We've got a great director there, Allison Tate, who really cares about the kids. And new research has come out that shows that the old ways of dealing with juvenile justice were probably making things worse. Okay. So you know, the whole kind of scared straight approach.
Oh, yeah.
You get the little kid, you throw them in jail for a little bit, freak them out. He'll never want to come back.
Yeah, right.
That, that's kind of, I mean, that's, it seems to make sense, right?
Sure.
But the research has come out that said that actually really damages their mental health. If you incarcerate a child for any amount of time, even briefly, it kind of scrambles their brain and it makes them worse and it makes them actually more likely to reoffend and come back constantly. So we've actually been hurting kids' chances by putting them in cages. And so it's like, okay, what do you, what do you do then? You know, because we got to have a, we've got to have something for kids who are getting in trouble and breaking the law. We just cut the ribbon on a new facility called the Bridge, which is a separate building in the same parking lot as juvenile detention facility. And that is a place where the police could drop off a kid that they pick up with, before taking them to jail. And so at this place, um, they could drop the kid off and they have counselors and staff members there that can assess the situation and ideally bring in the parents. Because a lot of times, you know, the kids were getting in trouble. It's, they don't have the best parents. The parents don't know what they're doing. They, they don't know how to control their kid. And the parents have issues. You can have parents with mental illness, drug problems, just had kids too young and don't know what they're doing. So let's bring in the parents and the kid, talk to the counselors. Let's figure out what's going on. Let's, our goal is to keep the kids out of the system. Cause once you get in that system, you're just endlessly coming back. You're on probation forever. So if we can fix the problem before we got to put them in the system, that'll improve the odds for the kids. It'll be less money we got to spend on incarceration in the future. And so far, um, it's been going really good. They've been helping a lot of families. They got some money from the state as well. The state contributed to the program. So the governor was there cutting the ribbon with us. And it's like, yeah, we can't be so stuck in ideas of the past just because we think they work. We got to take a look and see if it actually does work. You know, you got a program, a government program going for 30 years that gives you enough time to do the research and check the data to see if this is working or not. And if it's not, you can't be stuck in your dogma to say, no, we're just going to double down. You know, let's, let's go a different direction. Let's try something that actually works and see if that works. And so far this program is working. If it, if it stops working, let's do something else. But, you know, we're, we're talking about kids. We're talking about, and not just teenagers, we're talking about kids under 13 who are having problems, serious problems. And what can we do to keep them out of the cages and give them a better future? So this is something I'm pretty happy about.
God, that is fantastic.
Yeah.
I, I'm not familiar with the research you're, you're talking about, but it makes complete sense that it, you know, you kind of just change the worldview of the, of the individual, which is, hey, I'm going to have my rights stripped from me. I'm going to be a person that ends up in this thing. And then, you know, all rehabilitation or modification gets thrown out the window. Obviously it sounds like the bridge program too brings in the parents and brings in the, the people closest to them, which is, hey, look, there, there's a systemic breakdown here. Again, Deputy Gomez, who I was just chatting with, in, in a previous conversation, he was saying, hey, look, there are five reasons kids run away and get in trouble. Parents, 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 parents. And he's, he catches some flack for saying that, but he, he said, look, if you got an 11 year old that's, that's making some really, really bad decisions. Yeah, you can blame it on the 11 year old, but very rarely, I, I think he said, he had actually never seen a really fundamentally bad kid. He saw his kids in bad situations that ended up making bad decisions. That's wonderful. I, I'm, I don't even know what to say. I had no idea that was a program that you guys were working on.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you gotta think of the, the most messed up adult, worst person, you know?
Right.
They probably got kids, you know? And it's like, what's life like for those kids? So yeah, I don't think there's a, there's a lot of bad kids out there. There's, you know, if we can help them out at, when they're young, I think that's going to be better for everybody. And it's been a bit of a learning curve for law enforcement and the courts because they got to come around to a new way of thinking. And so our juvenile department has had to sort of train the police to say, no, it's okay. You can bring them here if it's appropriate. In some cases it, it might not be, but let's show you the place. Let's show you what we do. Make, make sure you're okay bringing the kids here before taking them to the detention facility. And I think the police are getting on board. So that's a good thing.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's man. And every time I've asked that question, is anything I've missed? I've never gotten something that cool. That's awesome. Well, Commissioner, thank you for coming in today. I know you've got a book schedule. Um, thank you for making the time. Thank you for what you have done for the county. And again, just as I tell everyone, it's like, just the fact that you're running again and bringing issues to the table and, and talking about what's important to you and what you guys have done, everybody wins with that. So win, lose or draw, thank you for what you're doing.
Oh, well, thank you for having me.
MTU Studios is the proud producer for the Ada County Sheriff Podcast, the Idaho Wildlife Federation Podcast, the State Representative Ted Hill Podcast, the Idaho State PTA Podcast and many more. If you or your organization is thinking about starting a podcast, MTU Studios would love to help. Just check out mtustudios.com.